Hafa Day, the virtual public hearing is now called to order. Today's Wednesday, January 19th, 2022. The time is 10:02 AM. Notices for this virtual public hearing were published in the Guam Daily Post on Thursday, February 3rd, 2022. Again, on Tuesday, February 8th, 2022, and via email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets on the same days. This is the Committee on Health, sorry. This is the Committee on Health, Land, Culture and Justice. We will be conducting a virtual public hearing today on Resolution Number 260-36COR. This Zoom meeting is hosted by the Legislature's AV staff and my committee staff, and I thank them for their assistance. The host of this hearing will mute all Zoom participants until called upon by the chair. Individuals testifying, please begin by stating your name for record-keeping purposes. So the agenda item for today is Resolution Number 260-36COR, introduced by Therese M. Turahi, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Amanda L. Shelton, Christopher M. Duainius, Joe S. Augustine, Telot Taitigui, V. Anthony Ada, Frank Blas Jr., Joanne Brown, James C. Moylan, Sabina Flores Perez, Clinton Iregel, Jose Pedro Turahi, Mary Camacho Torres, relative to expressing the support of Amina Trensa Sais, Nala Hesla Turanwahan for the passage of HR 6504, the Native Pacific Islanders of America Equity Act, because it seeks to allow eligible Native Chamorau and Native Northern Mariana organizations to qualify for federal contracting opportunities through their participation in certain small business programs that are administered by the Small Business Administration. I'd like to acknowledge the presence of my colleagues this morning, beginning with our Legislative Secretary, Senator Amanda Shelton, our Minority Leader, Senator Chris Duainius, Senator Sabina Perez, Senator Telot Taitigui, and Senator Joanne Brown. Good morning, colleagues, and thank you for being here with us today. I'd also like to thank, of course, our Congressman, Senator Congressman Mike Siniklis, and thank you Congressman for also joining us today. And thank you to all of you who are here to provide testimony and those who are listening as to this resolution. So the resolution is primarily sponsored by myself, so I would do a very brief introduction. Resolution Number 260-36 was introduced by myself and the overwhelming majority of the Guam Legislature to show our support of HR 6504, the Native Pacific Islanders of America Equity Act, which would give eligible Native Chamorau and Native Northern Mariana organizations some preference to qualify for federal contracting opportunities and other small business development training opportunities. HR 6504 was introduced by Congressman Michael Siniklis on January 25, 2022, and it was co-sponsored by Congressman Gregorio Kilili Camacho Soblan. I want to recognize them both for their efforts to bring equity and parity to the Chamoraus and re-fuel the wash on Guam and the CMNI. HR 6504 would amend the Small Business Act to include Native Chamorau and Native Northern Mariana entities. Currently, Chamorau-owned businesses are already included in the Pacific Islanders grouping and can qualify for some of these small business development programs as individual firms. But the amendments proposed in HR 6504 would expand that eligibility to specific eligible Chamorau-owned organizations that show that they directly benefit the indigenous people of Guam. It would be similar to how Native Hawaiian, Native American, and Native Alaskan-owned organizations are afforded certain benefits to federal contracts. I would like to read some of what the US Congress has written in the Findings and Purpose of the Small Business Act that explains why we need programs such as these to bring equity and opportunities to socially and economically disadvantaged groups. The Small Business Act states, quote, "The opportunity for full participation in our free enterprise system by socially and economically disadvantaged persons is essential if we are to obtain social and economic equality for such persons and improve the functioning of our national economy." That many such persons are socially disadvantaged because of their identification as members of certain groups that have suffered the effects of discriminatory practices or similar envidious circumstances over which they have no control. That such groups include but are not limited to Black Americans, Hispanic Americans, Native Americans, Indian tribes, Asian Pacific Americans, Native Hawaiian organizations, and other minorities. That it is in the national interest to expeditiously ameliorate the conditions of socially and economically disadvantaged groups. That such conditions can be improved by providing the maximum practical opportunity for the development of small business concerns owned by members of socially and economically disadvantaged groups. That such development can be materially advanced through the procurement by the United States of articles, equipment, supplies, services, materials, and construction work from such concerns. And that such procurements also benefit the United States by encouraging the expansion of suppliers for such procurements, thereby encouraging competition among such suppliers and promoting economy in such procurements, end quote. I'm hoping all of the people in Guam can be united on bringing these opportunities and added benefits to Guam, and specifically to any Native Chamorau organizations as defined in the bill. I've spoken to the Office of the Governor and the Lieutenant Governor. They have expressed to me their support on this issue. I think we can all agree that there are currently many federal contracts on Guam with likely more to come that some of our local eligible entities can compete for and get assistance if this bill passes. I'd like to now allow Congressmen Siniklis to provide testimony on Resolution 260-36 and to provide more background and information regarding HR 6504. Congressman Siniklis, oh, before you begin, if I could recognize the presence of Senator Frank Blas Jr. Thank you, Senator. Congressman Siniklis, if, I'd like to invite you now to have the floor.
Thank you, thank you so much, Madam Speaker. Am I coming through clear, okay? Thank you so much. First, I want to begin by thanking, thanking you, Madam Speaker, for accommodating my winter wear this evening. I would much rather be wearing island wear. So thank you so much for that, that initial accommodation. But more importantly, Madam Speaker, I want to thank you, Anilis Latoura, for the expeditious accommodation of moving this resolution forward and having this hearing today. We spoke just a few days ago about the opportunity of HR 6504 and the likelihood of us being able to move this through committee within the month. We've had received confirmation that this measure will be having a hearing at the subcommittee level on February 17th at 4:00 PM. And an invitation has been extended to you, Madam Speaker, to testify on behalf of you, Lastratura, which we're very much looking forward to. I would also like to thank the senators of the Guam Legislature for pretty much unanimously jumping on board with this. I know that everybody, of course, would have questions about how things are going to impact the local environment when we're doing federal actions. And the unanimity of support in this instance is going to go a very long way towards us being able to rally congressional support and get this through the committee level and into the House and through the whole legislative process. As you outlined, Madam Speaker, the purpose of this bill is twofold. The first is going to be to set up a federally recognized process for us to be able to identify those who would be considered Native Chamorau. By the way, we define that in the legislation, which is consistent with how we've been defining it locally for the purposes of conformity with all of the various laws and rulings to make sure there isn't any discrimination. And secondly, the legislation would then allow for that particular qualified group to then be able to avail of the Section 8A preference status available under the Small Business Administration that you outlined. And I'm sure some of our other participants here will be able to outline more expertly than I can. But in a nutshell, it'll allow for our native people to finally be federally recognized for the purpose of the contracting preferences available under Section 8A that would allow for them to have a level playing field with their native brothers and sisters who are already so recognized and able to avail of those same preference considerations. And so we're trying to build greater parity for our local people, our native people, and their native brothers and sisters throughout the rest of the country. We're trying to do it in a way that's going to be least disruptive to the various native programs outside of the one that we're specifically addressing in the legislation so that we're not going to be creating too much uncertainty with our native brothers and sisters. But we are also doing this for a very specific purpose, and that is that we can all do business together as one native people, all working together to try and provide the best kind of services that we can for these federal contracts with the preference status that we're able to avail of, as you so eloquently articulated earlier, Madam Speaker. So again, I'd like to thank Lastratura for moving as expeditiously as they have. We're hoping that our combined effort is going to give us the necessary momentum for us to be successful in this endeavor. Our, excuse me, our initial conversations are indicating that such success is likely, and I'll continue to keep Lastratura appraised as we move the measure forward and seek to get this enacted into law. Thank you so much, Madam Speaker, and fellow members of the Guam Legislature for the opportunity to testify. Thank you once again for moving as swiftly and as decisively as you have. I'll go ahead and remain present in case there are any questions or clarifications that the senators may have on the legislation or any potential witnesses who will be testifying. Thank you so much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Congressman, for your testimony and for your willingness to stay on and field some questions. I very much appreciate that, and I think that would be very helpful. Well, now, welcome testimony from Mr. T. Mark Spain, District Director, Hawaii Pacific Islands District Office, US Small Business Administration. Mr. Spain. Mr. Spain, if you can unmute yourself. Thank you.
Now, can you hear me, please?
Yes, we can hear you now. Please proceed.
I want to do deference to my colleague Ken Luhan, who has served the interest of the SBA for the island of Guam and the Western Pacific, and renewed interest on my part since my family has served three generations in the Pacific, going back to World War II. Ken, of course, has got a strong commitment. I will have follow-on comments, but Ken, I would like for you to take the testimony that we have submitted privately to the speaker. May I ask for Ken Luhan now to speak, Madam Speaker?
Thank you, Mr. Spain. Yes, I will invite Mr. Kenneth Luhan, US Small Business Administration of Guam. Please proceed, and if you could identify yourself for the record.
Good morning, and hafa day to all. My name is Kenneth Luhan. I'm the Branch Manager for the US Small Business Administration on Guam. I oversee the small business activities and services such as access to capital, managing and technical assistance, federal government contracting, and advocacy for small businesses here in Guam, CMNI, the FSM Palau, Republic of Palau, and the Republic Marsh Islands. Of course, joining me today in this virtual public hearing is to co-present our support of HR 6504 is 13 Mark Spain, who's the District Director for the SBA's Hawaii Pacific Island District Office. And we'd like to thank Senator Therese Turahi, who's Speaker of the 36 Guam Legislature, and the members of the Committee of Health, Land, Justice, and Culture for this opportunity to share our short remarks related to HR 6504, which is relative to the Native Pacific Islanders of America Equity Act, which seeks to allow eligible Native Chamorau and Native Northern Mariana organizations to qualify for federal contracting opportunities through their participation in certain small business programs that are administered by the SBA, more specifically called the 8A program. The SBA plays an important role in ensuring that small businesses gain access to federal contracting opportunities. Section 8A of the Small Business Act is intended to help small businesses owned by socially and economically disadvantaged individuals compete in the economy by providing business development activities such as counseling and technical assistance and providing access to federal contracting opportunities. The 8A program does not guarantee that participating firms will obtain federal contracts, but the firms are eligible for competitive awards, which is strictly for 8A firms that compete with, and also for so-source awards, which are awards made without competition once the certain requirements are met. I wish to share some background information of the requirements a firm must meet to qualify for the program. It's a process known to us as being 8A certified. And then they must meet other requirements to continue out participating. So in general, a concern meets the basic requirements for admission to the program if it is a small business that is unconditionally owned and controlled by one or more socially and economically disadvantaged individuals who are of good character and US citizens, of which demonstrates the potential for success. We would like to ensure that the legislative language presenting this bill conforms with and aligns itself with similar language within existing law, such as Section 8A of the Small Business Act, another regulatory statute governing our program. At the further review of HR 6504 and 13 CFR 124 Part A, we wish to present the differences in legislative language and offer reclamation to support this initiative. More specifically, the term Native Chamorau. pursuant to HR 6504, Section 4C1, the term Native Chamorau means an individual who can document that one or more of the individual's direct ancestors reside on Guam before August 1st, 1950. In comparison to 13 CFR 124.3, the Native Hawaiian means an individual whose ancestors were Native prior to 1778 of the era which comprised of the state of Hawaii. Statement, "Individual's direct ancestors residing on Guam" might create a different meaning or interpretation to the existing definition identified within 13 CFR 124.103, which reasonably identifies the members of designated groups. So unlike the definition of Native Hawaiians, which requires individuals with ancestors who are natives, and of course, CMNI's definition within HR 6504, Section 3A, HH1B, which is controlled, quote, "controlled by persons of Native Mariana descent", as defined in Section 4 of Article 12 of the Constitution, the commonwealth, Guam's definition might be open to various legal challenges if not specifically in the language. In addition, being born in a country that's not by itself suffice to make the birth country an individual's country of origin for purposes of being included within a designated group. So that being said, the reclamation that we'd like to make suggests to the public care of the legislature is to change the definition of individual's direct ancestors residing on Guam to that of the, similar to what the Native Hawaiians have defined as ancestors who are natives. And that's the only thing that we're looking at. Therefore, there is no comment, if there's no further comments under the recommendations changes to the content of the bill. I would like to now defer my remaining time to, for comments by my District Director, Mark Spain. And I thank Madam Speaker and the rest of the committee for the time to present our comments. I look forward to improving the landscape of federal contracting within Guam and CMNI. So for that, I'd like to direct my remaining time back to Mr. Spain. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. And Madam Speaker and those distinguished guests, hafa day. My commitment to the
Yeah, please proceed.
Thank you. My commitment to the Western Pacific is three generations long. I served in the Vietnam War. I'm age 76 and still proud to wear the uniform of the United States Marine Corps. I also have a proud member of the Cherokee Nation. I know the importance of Native Hawaiian and also other pursuits and the length of time that it took. In the Cherokee Nation, we refer to it as the Trail of Tears. We can avoid, through the congressional delegates from Guam and CMNI, we can avoid a trail of tears that my family experienced by carefully working with Ken and myself and our technical team to make sure that this HR 6504 goes through successfully. Collectively, Ken and I have over 79 years of federal and private sector-related experience. Let our experience and our passion, our persistence and patience with the congressional processes that our two delegates know very well can be arduous. We can expedite this. There's no justifiable reason for this particular legislation not to pass. But welcome, please, our guidance and our help. We want to see this succeed. Thank you all for all of the efforts that you have done as two congressional delegates are working on both the CMNI and also working on behalf of the Guam Legislatures. We applaud your effort, and we applaud the opportunity to serve you. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Spain and also Mr. Luhan. Very much appreciate your offer of technical assistance to expedite this bill, and I'm sure the Congressman also appreciates that. And I do appreciate your recommendation, Mr. Luhan. We will take that under consideration. Or if, and of course, all of testimony today will be part of the record that we also submit together with our resolution. All right. We're now here from Mr., if I could recognize the presence of my colleague, Mr. Senator Anthony Ada. Good morning, Senator. Thank you for joining us. So today we have with us, just to recap, I have, we have the Legislative Secretary, Senator Amanda Shelton, the Minority Leader, Senator Chris Duainius, Senator Sabina Perez, Senator Telot Taitigui, Senator Joanne Brown, and Senator Frank Blas Jr., and Senator Anthony Ada. Thank you, colleagues. And of course, we are joined by Congressman Michael Siniklis from Guam. So we will now hear from Mr. James Martinez. If you could identify yourself for the record. Okay, we will hear from Mr. Monty McDowell. Mr. McDowell, you're welcome to testify. Please identify yourself for the record.
I am Monty McDowell. I'm the CEO of a local Chamorau-owned, woman-owned small business. Been in business for 32 years. I retired in 1990 as a Navy officer out of Pearl Harbor Shipyard, came home, started this business in facility maintenance and real estate. And then we crafted it into what it is today, which is Chamorau and woman-owned. And I'd like to just, from a business standpoint, educate some of you in what that really means. Back in the, in the 90s, I was waiting for the Navy Housing bid to come out for what they call change of occupancy of military family housing. And I knew I was qualified for it. Our company was placed for it. We had to credentials, a bona fides. And when it didn't come out, I found out that it had been awarded to an Alaska Native corporation. At that time, there wasn't anybody in Guam who knew what an ANC was. So of course, we, people like Ken Luhan educated us, and we understood what it was. And I went, had a meeting with the Admiral at that time and with the head of, Chairman of the Guam Chamber of Commerce. And I told the Admiral that this, this was something new to us. We weren't experienced in it, and that after looking into it, now I understand what the Alaska Native is, and they have this special disposition where the contracting officer can, can simplify their life in such a way that they could do arms-length negotiation with an Alaska Native company and come up with an, with an agreement legally in the contracting world and award what would have been an opportunity for my company to go after and other companies worldwide to go after. Pulled that completely out of our, the realm of possibility. And after looking into it, I felt, and still feel to this day, that the economic posture of Alaska was much better off than the economic posture of Guam, and that they come over here, that particular entity at that time, and take the rice out of our rice bowl, so to speak. I also have a sincere desire, as the woman owner, the Chamorau woman-owned segment of our company has, is we'd like to build the core competencies of our company up here in Guam, in particular, worldwide also. But so we have the assets that Department of Defense and the federal government need in our geographic region, right here in Guam. Build it with local companies, have it here as to, we do a good job. We never fail the Chamorau businesses or Guam businesses in general here in Guam. But we need at least the opportunity to compete. And when they give the work away to, to entities that qualify in this category, we don't get that opportunity. And those competencies are brought in. Sometimes they hire our employees, sometimes they bring their own in. And when their contract's over, they go back. So that doesn't do much to enhance the federal posture, particularly the defense posture in this part of the world. And so I, our company, went through the 8A process, which meant for a period of time, we did have that credential that the Alaska natives, the Native Hawaiian organization, the tribes have. And we were very successful, and we expanded our business footprint because of it across the entire nation. We were all over the state of California and still have some contracts there. Norfolk, Virginia, I had 150 people in that area. I had seven counties in the state of Georgia. And who ran these things? I hired every Chamorau that lived in the US to run these businesses on behalf of our company, as we had that footprint worldwide. When those are nationwide, as those contracts went away, our 8A posture went away. They were bid out at 8A. We weren't qualified any longer, didn't have that opportunity. So we just have to learn to live without that credential. That credential allows you to bid in a pie that is, let's say, is this small. So you're bidding against maybe 10 other companies for work. Now you get thrown after you graduate, and you're bidding against 60 companies. Well, let's face it, you could come in number two, but that's as good as coming in number 60. There's only one winner in the federal, in federal contracts. And I still think that our social, economic posture here in Guam is just as bad, if not worse, than the Alaska natives, the Native Hawaiians, the tribes. And there's no reason that we shouldn't be able to play in that arena. And having had a long conversation with somebody from Washington DC on this subject this morning, I, I could not be in more support of this House resolution going through and getting Guam to get equal footing with, that it deserves and has always deserved and never had an opportunity to achieve at this point. I think that's all I have. I'd just like to say with Mark Spain that this, this is the gentleman who strives and has taught myself and, and several groups of people from Guam in a program called Emerging Leaders, and it takes several weeks as he tries to instill knowledge within us to help us grow our businesses. And I want to thank Mark, who I thanked him several times before. And Ken is the one that reaches out and nominates us to be prospective students in the SBA class. So you've got a lot of talent on this screen here. And the, this resolution that our Congressman has come up with is spot on. And I, I wish us, the Committee of Guam, nothing but the best in getting this through. I really, really hope this gets through. Thank you for the time.
Thank you very much, Mr. McDowell. I appreciate your testimony and your, your being here this morning with us. We've also received written testimony from the Guam Women's Chamber of Commerce in support of the resolution. They say in part that HR 6504 seeks to enhance participation from smaller disadvantaged businesses attached to a Native Chamorau organization with a nonprofit status to avail themselves of federal programs so they can promote training, technical programs, or contracting possibilities within the federal government. This should allow a greater opportunity for diversity and a more level field of competition. The GWCC concurs with this effort. The vision of the GWCC is to make Guam an island community whose economy is driven and influenced by the equal participation of women in business through programs, mentorship, networking, access to resources. Through our advocacy efforts, the GWCC also seeks to promote growth and development together with creating awareness of the importance of women in business on the island's economic, social, and cultural platforms. Like HR 6504, the driving force is inclusion and equality in the pursuit of federal programs. Madam Speaker, the GWCC applauds this effort and supports the passage of this resolution. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony on Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony on this resolution. Sincerity Maria Julenya, the young Guerrero, President Guam Women's Chamber of Commerce. All right, is there anyone else who is here to testify who has not yet testified? All right, and if not, then we are going, I'm going to open up the panel for my colleagues to ask questions or make comments. Congressman Siniklis, before we begin, is there anything else you would like to add or clarify based on the testimony?
Yes, Madam Speaker, thank you very much. I appreciate the sentiments from our, our local and regional SBA folks on the, on the call. I did want to reassure you, Les Latura, that part of our process of introducing this legislation included going through the SBA federally to get technical assistance and clearance on the language. So we are vetted with the SBA and we got the okay that the language was sound. Secondly, we did the same thing with the Department of the Interior to make sure that they, with their oversight over indigenous and native organizations, also cleared the legislation. So we have in writing technical assistants basically saying that the legislation is sound and okay to proceed. And just as further reassurance, you know, I, I know as a, as a, as a colleague of yours, when it comes to drafting our bills, we depend on the expertise of our staff and so do we in the congressional office. But one of the advantages that we further have is the House Office of Legal Counsel, which basically drafts all of our bills. There's four hundred-plus lawyers in there, all of them with intense levels of education, training, and many, many years of expertise. And they're all layered on top of each other, making sure that the stuff that we're putting out is actually not going to be opening us up to legal challenge. So while I appreciate the sentiment shared, I would say that those have been very much addressed in the due diligence that we've done with the introduction of the legislation and the very extensive legal research that goes into drafting process. I wanted to thank Mr. McDowell for his, his testimony as well, very much so. We're, we're pretty, we're looking to just really give our, our local businesses the same shot that, you know, every other native-owned business should be able to be afforded if they're federally recognized. And that's what this process will avail of. But notwithstanding that, Madam Speaker, I would just like to go ahead and pause, of course, and yield to you and any other questions that may come my way. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Congressman. We'll begin with our Legislative Secretary, Senator Amanda Shelton.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and thank you for introducing this resolution in support of the bill. And I appreciate everyone here on the, the panel, your, your comments today and the suggestions for the bill, the concerns that were brought up. I think this is something that we talked about in the initial briefing that I asked the Congressman about. And I appreciate again the reassurance after you did explain that to us during the, the initial briefing on H R six-five-zero-four. So I want to thank everyone for that today again. And Mr. McDowell for your, your testimony. And this is something that I'm in full supportive and glad that we're able to do and do expeditiously here in the legislature. So I look forward to passing this in the next session. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Shelton. Minority Leader, Senator Chris Duñez.
Undangkulu nasidus masi, Madam Speaker, for your leadership on introducing this resolution and inviting members of the legislature, legislature in Guam to be part of this. Thank you, Congressman, for your leadership on this issue. You know, it's kind of interesting that we often talk about opportunities to unite the Marianas and bring us together as a people. And certainly, this resolution by having your colleague, Congressman Kalili, you know, side by side with you, Congressman, is a demonstration of what we can do continuously going forward to, to enhance, you know, our peoples and bring opportunities for our peoples at the highest levels of government. Mr. Spain and as well as, you know, Ken Luhon, thank you for being here and expressing your support. And the Congressman is, is, you know, mentioned that, you know, extreme vetting has been processed through H R six-five-zero-four. And but Kim Guam, I think we're going to, you know, prevail here most definitely. Monty, I, I think you would join a lot of people and, and your testimony was so compelling to say, it's about time. It's about time, you know, that we talk about these things and we've been talking about these things for a long time. How do we break through this veil? And, you know, Monty, I just want to say, not only your, your, your experience in having done international business based on, on qualifications, you know, the thing is, is that, that right now, we look, Congressman, as you, as you push forward and, and demonstrated also that, you know, while we train our local workforce, we are now once again going to be on the cusp of having a workforce to help us with this buildup and the like. But Monty and other businesses here build our people to stay and to continue to service these contracts going forward. These are so critical and important for our people. In closing, Madam Speaker, it reminds me of a lot of the times when I was in the executive branch and the discussions with the Congressional Office, Mr. Congressman, about when hub zones were still discussed for Guam. And, and, and the historically underserved, you know, for a little while, we, we were thinking, we had to pick villages really and find out. And, and finally, we broke through and the entire island of Guam became an underserved location. And, and, and that was so sensible and the right thing to do. So I kind of look at this effort, you know, being, you know, in congruity with that. And, and basically, you know, that kind of thing that we didn't have to pick Umatac or, or Santa Rita or something else to say, you know, these are the underserved locations of Guam. The entire island of Guam is underserved and deserves that federal recognition in terms of opportunities. We will build our island in, with opportunities like this and, and have our people stay home or maybe even come back home as we go forward. So Congressman, once again, I got it overstated, my, my appreciation for this introduction. And I look forward to Guam being victorious in this effort and, and legislature. I, I'm sure that the Speaker will work to ensure that we, we have this on-session agenda for this session because I think it's of that much importance. Sisus masi, Madam Speaker, once again, and what a great moment today for Guam.
Sisus masi, Senator Duñez. Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And I do have a couple of questions, I guess, maybe if I can ask Congressman Siniklis if he can respond to Ken, Ken Luhon's recommendations for amendments regarding the changing of the definition of native Chamorro from one that was resided or ancestry is connected to nineteen fifty versus what is seen in the Native Hawaiians definition?
Yeah, I'm, I, I don't want to be presumptuous as to the origin of Mr. Luhon's suggestion, but I will just say that we already cleared the SBA by seeking direct technical assistance on the language. And so the suggestion that the language as written needs to be amended in order to avoid potential lawsuit was in no way officially communicated through our official technical assistance requests from the Small Business Administration. Secondly, and this is just, you know, my observation and interpretation, the, the language that we're using in H R six-five-zero-four is actually consistent with what the courts have ruled as non-discriminatory. And so it's actually further buttressed by the fact that going this route has already been tested in different arenas and in different subject matters on a native basis. And it's actually been proven that this more generalized approach is going to have less of a, of a, of a discriminatory weight when, when viewed from the, the lens of the courts, as we've seen in the, in the Chamorro Land Trust case. And lastly, you know, when you look at statutory construction, right? What we're doing very specifically in the bill is we are creating a federally authorized mechanism to identify and qualify what is native on Guam. And that is an express power of the Congress. The Congress, as one of its express powers, is the ability to recognize native peoples. And there does not need to be congruity between one native people and another in order for them to be recognized. You know, a tribe in the Northeast and a tribe in the Southwest does not have to have the same kind of history or the same kind of evolution in order for one tribe to be recognized over the other or equal to the other. The Congress has the full plenary authority to be able to determine how it's going to recognize native people. And that's the exact plenary authority that we're going to be exercising when we allow for our native people to be so categorized by the way the legislation is drafted. So anybody who meets the criteria based on this legislation, if so passed by the Congress as established in that criteria and enacted into law, that's the Congress basically saying that this is how we identify native people on Guam. So I, I appreciate the, the concern. There always will be a tendency to say, hey, you know, it was done this way over here. Maybe we need to keep doing it that way in order for it to be okay. But again, I'm providing multi-level reassurances. The technical assistance did not present any kind of discriminatory concern from the SBA on our official inquiries, that we have had multiple attorneys reviewing this in the drafting process, that the case law that's been established in the recent outcomes of our Chamorro Land Trust are actually consistent with the language that we're establishing. And that ultimately, the plenary authority of the Congress to determine how we identify native peoples is paramount and is not going to be something that can be challenged if it's clearly defined, which we're doing in this legislation. I hope I answered your question.
Yes, Madam Speaker. This is Mark Spain. I would like to, in behalf of the senators.
If you, yeah, just hold on a minute, Mr. Spain, and I'll allow an opportunity. But Senator Perez, you have the floor.
All right, thank you, Madam Speaker. So Mr. Spain, did you want to also chime in on that?
Yes, I would. I'm impressed with the confidence that the Congressman, Congressman Speaker, Congressman Siniklis. My family goes back to nineteen sixty-two when Senator Annoi first advanced the Native Hawaiian. I would strongly encourage, and I'm really impressed by your confidence, but my sixty years of being involved with family affairs with Native Hawaiian, I would strongly suggest that we don't rely solely on the attorneys inside the Beltway, that you talk to the people in the field with us in the Native Hawaiian community so that you can, with assurance, exercise properly the plenary activity that you so well documented. I would welcome to speak with you offline, not take the time of this committee or this hearing to share with you historical facts that will give you even further assurance that your track and your approach will be successful. Sixty years of experience, I think is rather sage, but it also comes from a person who's walked the journey that you successfully want to achieve and hopefully very quickly. If you would like to communicate with us offline, I welcome the opportunity to do so. Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Mr. Spain, for that. And thank you, Congressman, for your, for your response as well. I just maybe have one more question, you know, in looking at H R six-five-zero-four, it identifies Chamorro organization as one that is, has been registered under, with the Department of Revenue and Taxation as an, as a nonprofit. I guess perhaps, is it possible to expand that definition to also for-profit organizations? Or is there a reasoning behind limiting it to nonprofits? I'm sorry, that question's for Congressman Siniklis.
Thank you again. Again, with the drafting, we're trying to be as consistent as possible with what's already been enacted into statute. And so as I explained to an individual who had similar concerns, the native organizations themselves are not going to specifically be the contractors. Those organizations are the ones that are going to be identified and certified as being native. And then those organizations are either going to establish their own contracting firms or through partnerships, apply for these contracts, depending on whether or not those contracts enable those kind of partnerships to, to be the applicant. So to have a for-profit entity to expand it into that arena would kind of be, be growing the scope of it in a way that's, I, I would say, something that would actually raise more questions than provide answers. The current path for it to be nonprofit-driven is already a path that's been taken and proven through the two very different and distinct, the three very different and distinct entities that are out there, which are the tribal entities, the native Alaskan corporations, and the native Hawaiian organizations, all of which have very different statutory authorizations. So it's not like, you know, you can only take one path and not the other. But that being said, I don't think going into the for-profit area is something that would be necessary at this time. But I would be open to revisiting that in the future if, in the event, we could get additional reassurances that doing so would not, would not prove problematic. We're trying to take the path of least resistance at this point.
Thank you so much for that, that comment and response. Yeah, I've, I've been talking, I remember this has been a long time coming, speaking to some of the businesses out here that, you know, they haven't had the opportunity to fairly get contracts. And yet billions of dollars are being spent. So, you know, I, I see that injustice too as well. So I appreciate all the efforts and thank you, thank you, Madam Speaker, for this opportunity.
Thank you very much, Senator Perez. Senator Titigui, you are recognized.
Sisus masi, Madam Speaker, and thank you so much for allowing me to co-sponsor a very important resolution. And thank you, Congressman, for pushing this. I know that Bill H R four-one-zero-two was also introduced last year by yourself as well. And I, so I have a question with regard to that because I know the only changes that were really made so far from what I've seen, unless you can correct me if I'm wrong, the placement of the Northern Marianas as well as the spelling of Chamorro has been, is the only difference I see so far. But am I missing anything else substantially that's changed from H R four-one-zero-two?
No, Senator, in fact, your observations are pretty on point. And the reason why those changes occurred was upon introduction of the legislation, as we were moving it into the committee level, the committee chairman, who's also the dean of our delegation and our senior Marianas representative Congressman Sablon, looked at the bill and said, hey, this is something that he very much would also like to have applied to the Northern Mariana Islands. And so with that, we said, okay, we're going to respectfully pause on forty-one-o-two and allow for a new bill to be constructed, which is the sixty-five-o-four that we're discussing now, which includes the provisions and the changes that you described.
Senator Titigui, we can't, we can't hear you. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, sorry, I accidentally pressed the mute and was coughing. So other than that, then, those are just the two changes then. Okay, so that's, that's good to know. And, and I'm glad to see that Sinemi is also included in this, gives us a little more oomph over there, considering his position, his longstanding position as a Congressman. I think it'll take us a little bit farther or give that extra push that we may need for something as important as this, you know, to bring the equal playing field on both sides. Also with regards to, you know, as mentioned earlier about the hub zones and, and the importance of that. So the entire Sinemi and Guam are located within the hub zones. You know, what additional benefits may a nonprofit receive in preferential ratings or incentives if, if that nonprofit becomes a native Chamorro organization in the Guam hub zone areas?
That, that's a very technical question, Senator. I would probably need to defer to the SBA folks on, on the, in the hearing. I do know that the section eight A considerations would apply whether it's a hub zone or not, but I don't know if the hub zone variable creates a different kind of advantage or disadvantage.
So can I ask Mr. Spain or Ken Luhon if you could answer that question for me?
Mr. Luhon would be great to answer.
Okay, hi, Ken. Good to see you.
I said there, yes, relative to the hotel program, there is a ten percent price variance that's offered to the contracting community as it relates to hub zone. Right now, the whole entire island of Guam, Sinemi, are hub zone locations. So therefore, every, every entity that has a principal place of business here in Guam is, is eligible. They may not qualify, but they may be eligible to be part of the program. But the benefit that goes to the hub zone program is a ten percent price variance in terms of the contract, contract bids. As it relates to the eight-day program, they both have similar benefits where they, they both could receive a so-so award as well as a competitive award given to, to both entities. What Monty, as Monty McDowell alluded to earlier, he mentioned his, his past experience being, being an eight-day contractor, where after the nine-year session that he had with the SBA, he was no longer certified as an eight-day contractor because of the fact that we don't fall under the ANC or NHA provisions that allows them to continue on with it. And that's where the CDC or the Community Development Corporation, this not popularization that you referred to, comes into play because... Comes into play because the entity, the Guam-based entity and the CNMI-based entity would then have to be registered with the CDC. Which is that nonprofit organization that the Congressman has alluded to. And be recertified to go on again to become what's called super eight A is the term that they use. Super eight A and that reuse the contract of being an eight A again. So in this case, Monte McDowell and his firm. Would then have to be renewed to do another another couple of years of being an eight A again and. Not having to be developed, you know, to be terminated from the contract because he graduated. So. There is a lot of benefit being an eight A company out here in Guam. As a matter of fact, our portfolio size within the SBA here locally has reduced. We used to have at least thirty-five companies in the past. We're now down to probably a handful of companies here in Guam. And so what's happening is you're seeing a lot more eight A companies from abroad. Out of outside the area of Guam, coming into Guam. Developing them, building the services out here in the contracts here and they're actually taking a lot of contract opportunities from Guam, Guam folks. So this is a great bill that can definitely help and assist the island community.
Yeah, thank you. Oh, yes. In fact, you answered my second question that I had for you with regards to the potentials. Appreciate your your response, Ken. And your thoroughness on this. So. And the last question I think I have, I'm not going to belabor this is the, you know, Congressman Sam Nicholas. When the Tomorrow Registry Program is made a part of the Organic Act. You know, are are the the data information collected by the Tomorrow's Registry for the Decolonization Registry? And the Tomorrow Registry, you know, Public Law twenty-three dash one three zero, be capable of migrating to the new registry?
In a perfect world, we would hope so. But I would I would say in a for for a safer outcome, I would suggest we do not. And the reason is because we're going to want to 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 make sure that after this thing is is federally established. That there that the timelines sync up. So once it's federally established, then everything that's certified after that. You know, it it falls in line with with what came first, which was the actual federal authorization. Migrating on older listing in, we can try and establish conversations about that. And 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 see whether or not those processes can 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 be done. But just in the interest of making sure that 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 there's a sequence of events. That can be pointed back to and looked at as having validity upon enactment. I would recommend that we actually just use a new federal authorization and and reestablish. The native, the native status based on those criteria after after the enactment and and create a whole new, a whole new list.
Okay. Well, thank you so much for that response. And and I will take that in consideration and. See if we can do some type of migration here. You know, we don't want to lose data. That is very precious to us. Also, before I close, Madam Speaker, I'd like to thank Monte McDowell for coming and testifying today on this, giving us an example of the situation. As to why why this is so, so important that we move in this direction. So thank you so much for being here, Mr. McDowell, and wishing you the very best. And to Mr. Spain, thank you for coming, spending time. I know it's about four hours ahead, but appreciate your time here too as well. Thank you. To this, Madam Speaker.
To this, Madam Speaker, Senator Tai Tegui. Senator Brown, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. And I certainly join the chorus in thanking. The participation of Mr. Luhon, Mr. Spain, and certainly Monte McDowell. And bringing to the table his experience of many years and working in the private sector. And certainly to our congressmen, you know, we've seen over the years, obviously. Other, you know, companies, as was mentioned, coming into Guam and even trying to pronounce some of the names, but knowing that they're able to come in. And take advantage of these federal contracts. And yet, you know, our people on Guam and our our brothers and sisters in Northern Marianas are nowhere to be found. And yet, our history, of course, tells us that we are very much in a similar category while we're part of the very big and broad American family. We're also part of the not-so-good history. You know, where our people have, while we've been part of the family, we've been the disadvantaged part of the family. And sometimes it's not sitting at the same table in the same room. So anything that can be done to provide that equity to our people. And certainly our private sector to benefit from these programs that are available funding through the Small Business Administration. Is definitely a tremendous plus because we'd love to see our own local companies. Maybe they go to Alaska, maybe they go to Hawaii and other states in the United States. To perform, you know, very similar services are being performed by these other companies that are coming into Guam that would fall into these categories. So I think we all collectively see a tremendous plus. We see an opportunity also for our our entrepreneurs and our our people in the private sector to have an equitable opportunity to sit at the same table. And be engaged and also contribute their their capabilities and their expertise. And also, you know, the the opportunity for a financial benefit that hopefully will be brought back and reinvested back here in Guam and in our people. So all around, I mean, it's not every day we get a piece of legislation or in this case, a resolution two sixty that our speaker has has put forth that is a mutual benefit all around. So I think it's a very good day. And certainly, Mr. Spain, I've never met you before, but I really appreciate, I'm sure we all do. To see an advocate in your position, you know, supporting the interests also of fellow. Members of the American community that have been disadvantaged and and being able to bring your your expertise, your experience to the table. And and perhaps you're you're able to make it a shorter walk for us, so to speak, because you can you can help us avoid the pitfalls and. And help us essentially maneuver through this whole process that ultimately can make this a shorter timeframe. You know, I I'm hopeful and very hopeful for efforts of our congressmen to get this legislation through Congress. So that we can actually see it implemented and see opportunities continue to open up for our people. So thank you. I don't have any questions. I appreciate the dialogue and questions and comments that have provided provided prior to to me commenting. And certainly, again, thank you to all of you again, Congress, Congressman Sam Nicholas. Thank you for your continued efforts to advocate for our people. And also for our brothers and sisters as well in the Northern Mariana Islands. Thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to comment on this resolution.
Thank you very much, Senator Brown. Senator Frank Blas Jr., you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you, Congressman, Mr. Spain, Ken, Mr. Luhon, Mr. McDowell. For being on to and being able to provide insight. Thank you, Congressman, for your continued leadership and effort to be able to to provide. You know, parity and to be able to, you know, to speak for the people of Guam, to continue to speak for the people of Guam. Thank you, Madam Speaker, for introducing this 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 resolution in support of the effort of our good congressman. Couple of questions that 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 I have. One is to 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 the congressman. With regard to the definitions, and I, you know, spent some time here talking about the definition. And a concern or or an inquiry by by my colleague, Senator Tai Tegui. You know, about being able to merge an existing list with 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 the current one. It brought to mind, okay, is there, is is the language for the definition consistent with, again. The language that, you know, that defines who who a tomorrow is. In other pieces of legislation or initiatives that are that are on the hill right now or have gone through the hill?
There have been no such initiatives that have gone through the hill on the federal side. And so this would be the first time that we're going to be legislatively recognizing recognizing our native people in this fashion. There has been, as I as I alluded to earlier, the the court ruling. That that basically created the window for, okay, if we're going to identify native peoples, it needs to have more of a general general sense. And using the nineteen fifty date as the 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 pre nineteen fifty date as the origin date, so to speak. Was was satisfactory to the courts, provided that there was no blood quantum or or racial racial qualification necessary. So it is consistent on the on the legal ruling side. This has never been done statutorily on the legislative side.
I appreciate that because, again, you know, if you can recall, you know, a lot of the conversation and a lot of the, I guess, the concern. With regards to the the decolonization discussion has always been on the interpretation of who's qualified. And I appreciate that this is probably going to be a good thing for us so that there is that, there is now that legally defined. Recognized, congressionally recognized definition that we can move forward on that. I truly, truly appreciate that. Mr. McDowell, you 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 know, I appreciate the history that you were able to provide with regards to what your business has gone through. And I'd like to inquire, you 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 initially had your eight A designation and as a result, from my understanding is. This was was basically a first step, if you will, right? If I'm if I'm correct. But to move on, what was, what was you? What held you back? Or or what was there a process that that you you couldn't complete? Because of the lack of a designation or whatnot?
You go, when you go into the SBA eight A program, there's a lot of qualifications that takes a year or so to to jump through all that. And prove that the minority owners of the company. Are socially and economically disadvantaged. So once you jump through all the hoops, they. And you get the designation, then you have the opportunity to now compete in that eight A arena for bids that are set aside in eight A or. Yeah, the bids are set aside in eight A. It's a nine-year program, which is intended to. Allow you the opportunity to grow and and hopefully prosper. And then at the end of nine years, this special opportunity that lands you a great deal more work than without it. Has you take the training wheels off and you're off and running. Well. All my experience was in these things in San Diego, Thirty Second Street, Camp Pendleton and Coronado and San Francisco. Virginia, Georgia and all that. So I had all that work. That's where my experience was. The training wheels came off, the bids came to an end, they were rebid in the eight A arena. Once once you get in the eight A, the contracting officer normally bids in the same category again. I did not have that credential, so I couldn't go back. And that's where my experience of body findings were there. But I have used those with the CPARS, the Contract Performance Appraisal Review. Which is a database system the federal government has that all contracting officers have access to when you bid anywhere in the world. So those will always remain with me and allow me the opportunity to garner work. I have garnered work here in Guam and other places because of that eight A successful work. But it does come to an end, but not for the Alaska natives, native Hawaiians or the tribal. It continues on pretty much indefinitely. When they grow financially to a certain posture, they spin off and open another company. So I would like, there was a question somebody made, I think Senator Tai Tegui, about why. Eight A and not hub zone or whatever, contracting authorities like like NAFAC. They're contracting on behalf of lots of customers in Guam. And they're the those big ones, they're they're required to try to put certain amount in in certain programs, you know. Contractors so many, so much percentage of the business goes to women-owned. Eight A, hub zone. I got a hub zone contract, which is island-wide custodial from from the Navy up to Anderson. And that that was set aside for hub zone. And to show you also, if you don't mind me interjecting that. Sometimes things happen and you kind of wonder how it happened. Senator Twainis mentioned the hub zone. I I went to Congressman Bernalio's Guam office. And I said, this hub zone thing doesn't work for Guam because you got a little thing in PD that's a hub zone, a little spot in Baragata that's a hub zone. Something in Malolo that qualifies as a hub zone. This is a small, two hundred and ten square mile island. Can we get this get it designated as a hub zone? And when she her staff got together, they said, well, it's going to look a little self-serving for Guam. But Monty's got a pretty good idea here. But let's make all. Influr area, all, you know, CNMI, America Samoa, Virgin Islands. And it it came through. And just because I stopped by the stopped by her office one time and put the bug, I didn't do anything further. They did it all. The Congress. So I say that in the sense, though, if you got a good idea. Stop by Congressman Sam Nicholas' Guam office and share that idea. You just never know where it might go. I'm sorry, I took some of your time, Senator.
No, 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 no. I appreciate it because you will be able to provide the insight and and it's the experience, you know, as we as we move forward that, you know, we have. You know, within, you know, our people, we have the that that they have the experience and the frustration of where we're next to go.
And so you got great people there. Never fails. The Guamanians, we don't fail when we get work.
You provide that a great testimony on the validation and in the need for for it. So I truly, truly appreciate, yeah, you know.
This phase here, we build our own competencies right here in the island we love.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Madam Speaker, that's all I have right now. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you very much, Senator Blas. Senator Anthony Ada, you have the floor.
I think you had another meeting, Madam Speaker.
My apologies. All right. I had one question, Mr. Spain, if I could ask you. So part of the program under, you know, under these programs allows for nonprofit corporations that are. That working through these native tomorrow organizations or that are nonprofits are going to. Bring benefit to the native Tomorrow's, right? So the nonprofit has to have business activities that will principally benefit native Tomorrow's. And I wanted to ask you, in your experience in Hawaii and and other areas. If you could just show us some examples of how this has worked for the native Hawaiians, for example. If you could turn on your microphone.
Thank you. That unmute helps. The experience is one gentleman. His name is Colonel Ray Jardine. And Congressman Sam Nicholas, I would strongly suggest you take note of that name. He is a very successful native Hawaiian organization, nonprofit. And what he did is he organized around him the for-profit entities that had the specialized skills. He didn't have to worry about the eight A program in its nine-year run. He was able, and I can give you numerous examples of how he perpetuated the eight A experience. For the firms that were for-profit that fed his nonprofit. And I must tell you that his success was basically driven by the fact that he worked very closely with Senator Annoi. Senator Dan Annoi is a legacy in Hawaii, but it took him many years to bring parity for the native Hawaiian. And his collaboration in building that type of income revenue to the nonprofit. Was done in conjunction with a very good friend of my family, Senator Stevens from Alaska. It was these two senators that brought the native Hawaiian and the Alaska native corporations into existence. So as I was sharing with Congressman Sanipolis, there's so much information that is not contained in Washington. And with all the wisdom of attorneys, I understand that. But when you talk to the people who have walked the walk. They can be very helpful in making sure that H R sixty-five oh four. Coming from the street, if I may say so, will be very helpful in making sure that Senator Congressman Sanipolis's effort on behalf of Guam. And the CNMI Congressman Sablon will be successful. Listen to the sage knowledge that exists in the communities. And it's not on the mainland. It is solely within the Western Pacific. I'm gonna go one step further. I am prepared to meet with my regional administrator in Los Angeles on Friday. To launch an immediate recruitment effort for eight A firms in anticipation of a very successful effort by the part of H R sixty-five oh four's likely passage. My commitment is to grow from six firms in the Hawaiian, I mean, in the Guam Contractors Association to a total of thirty firms by the end of this year. I will be prepared to come to Guam as frequently as necessary, even if I have to do it as a private citizen. To get it done. Because sometimes, as congressmen know. We don't necessarily have the budget to do it on the travel circuit that is funded by the US government. So I meet in Guam with a council of senior military officials, specifically at Camp Blas. With a gentleman by the name of Colonel Don Baldwin, who is at the chief of staff level. I will come as a volunteer on my way to Vietnam, where I'm also doing volunteer work. And I will come to Guam without the benefit of being. And I will come to Guam without the benefit of being quote unquote, wearing my SBA hat. My commitment to Guam is passionate. I'll leave it at that.
All right, Mr. Spain, but I, I was looking more particularly for when the businesses partner with the nonprofit corporations for the benefit of native Hawaiians. If you could give us examples of what exactly those nonprofits have done?
The nonprofits basically serve the community through the Native Hawaiian Organizational Council. They basically further the advancement.
Yes, but I'm looking for particular examples. Yes.
I'm giving you that example. His name is Colonel Ray Jardine. Colonel Ray Jardine has a nonprofit organization, which there are six different offices or a for-profit that feed that. I'm making, making sure that that's the organization that he represents. Now, let me ask you, ask a specific question beyond that.
All right. Thank you. No, I just wanted to hear, I wanted the people who are listening to hear exactly the types of benefits that the nonprofits have brought to the native Hawaiians. I mean, we say that they are bringing this, they, of course, in their, you know, names and stuff. And so I just wanted to know, and I'm sure I could look it up and I will look it up, but I wanted to use those examples.
Example? May I give you one example?
Just one minute. Yeah, just one minute. Yes, Mr. Spain. Yeah, I wanted to use the examples of, of the native Hawaiians to show possibilities for, of course, the native Chamoros that are supposed to benefit from this bill.
And this might not exist in Guam, if I may say so. It may not exist in Guam, but the biggest problem is homeownership in native, in native Hawaiian lands. We have more royal lands in the state of Hawaii that are supposed to be deeded to individual Hawaiian families. Some have been on the waitlist for over fifteen or sixteen years. The native Hawaiian organizations are now contributing working capital to where those homesteaders can now have a home of their own and not be without property in the land where their forefathers were there. That's the biggest benefit is homeownership.
Thank you very much. That's exactly what I'm, I'm hoping is going to come from partnering in this manner and, and the programs that, you know, allow the businesses to partner with the nonprofit organizations. And when it says for the principal benefit of the native Chamoros, I, I am hoping that those are the types of benefits that we will see. Mr. Luhon, did you want to add anything to that?
Yes, Madam Speaker, I'd like to, like to offer an example that's taking place right now. Today, we have a local firm here that is one of our eight A companies, the Philidy Group, managed by Al Yanger and his company, who is actually engaged with Ray Jardine right now, which is the certified development company in Hawaii. And benefits that he's receiving at this point in time is self-consortia. He's getting consultations from his organization. He's getting training from his organization. He's getting a guidance from that, that organization to help bolster the eight A status that he has here in Guam. So that way he can be a little bit more productive going after contract opportunities out there. So that's the relationship that we have from Guam, a Guam based firm that's actually engaged with the CDC, in this case, the nonprofit organization within Hawaii. So that, that's sitting in place right now. And that's what, that's what the nonprofit can do here in Guam, more specifically to help the community of Guam as opposed to having Guam go to Hawaii to get the services out there.
Thank you. I have no further questions, except I would like to ask a congressman to, if he had any additional remarks, Congressman Siniklis.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just wanted to, again, thank Ilastatura and yourself for your leadership and your collaboration in us trying to move this measure forward. I wanted to thank the folks from the SBA for making their time available as well to offer their insight. And, and more specifically, I wanted to thank Monte and all of the other contractors out there who've just been able to continue doing business in a set of circumstances that is just not, not the same for, for other native peoples compared to ours. You know, you guys continue to just do the work that needs to be done, create the jobs, you know, apply for the contracts, win the awards, make us all look good by doing a stellar job and, and getting back on and, and doing it all over again. Wanted to thank you guys for just, for just continuing to, to stay the course. And hopefully, with all of us working together, we'll be able to make that course just a little easier. Thank you so much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Congressman. And of course, thank you to the SBA representatives from Guam, Hawaii and the district. And thank you, Mr. McDowell, and to the Women's Chamber for their very valuable testimony. It's you businesses that really, we are trying to assist with this and to, to bring some parity, equity, and to allow additional opportunity. And of course, with that additional opportunity, we are hoping to bring additional benefits to the native Chamoros as described in this bill. And I believe that there is a huge potential for this type of a partnership to, to bring what is, as Mr. McDowell points out, you know, our conditions here on Guam are in sore need of a, a boost, right? We've got lands available for housing that we cannot build houses on, and we especially need that. And, and so I'm hoping that, you know, with the guidance of all of you, that we will be able to establish this, pass the bill, show our support, our, our unified support on Guam. I especially want to thank all of my colleagues for their support and, and their quick attention and support of this bill and our, the resolution in support of the bill and so that we can promptly put that before Congress. And I hope that together we can all bring the improvements to Guam that are necessary, that we are all working for. Sidus Massey told us. There being no additional individuals to present testimony, we will consider Resolution number two six zero dash thirty six COR duly heard. The public hearing is now adjourned and it's eleven eighteen AM.